Put the green light, red light.
Okay, good evening. Let's open the meeting for the public meeting Tuesday, September 7th, 2021 at 1900 hours.
Underneath to the flag of the United States of America, in the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So just keep on the non-public, I get a motion to seal the minutes.
Motion to seal the non-public minutes of September 7th, 21. Second.
Second by Charlie in discussion. Charlie?
Aye.
Evan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Anna, aye. Okay. So first one, on agenda A, seal non-public minutes. B, harassment course payment update. Nancy?
Oh, yeah, that's the sheet. The board wanted me to see who has taken the harassment course, as well as, because the trustees wanted to get paid $5 and the board wanted to know how many other would be effective.
Do you have that number? No?
Well, if you look at the sheets, the ones that have the asterisks are the ones that are elected officials who don't normally get up pay.
Three, four.
And that's only the ones that actually took the course. If there's others, I don't have their certificates.
Those 11.
Fifty-five bucks?
And what are we going to do with the individuals who haven't taken it?
We don't have a list yet.
Well, it doesn't matter if you have a list or not, they haven't taken it.
We still have to come up.
And there was nothing that said you'd be punished or whatever if you didn't. I don't know.
We said we just suspend them.
Well, you're going to suspend selectmen.
Yeah, I don't think that was ever a discussion, let alone a motion.
Kate, did you do it online?
What about reminder emails?
What?
What about reminder emails? Can we do that?
Ask her if she took hers.
No, did you take the harassment class online by PrimeX?
No, I have it up. I had trouble logging on for several weeks, but I'm good now. I'm actually trained to teach it through my social work, but I haven't done the PrimeX one.
Well, you took it somewhere else?
It's when you get your master's in social work, you have to take a state course, a state course on it, but I'm going to do the PrimeX too. I was having trouble logging on.
No, I'm saying you did that this year, right?
No.
No, no, that was when I got my license.
Okay. Because we do accept other companies' classes.
Not that long ago.
Okay.
All right. Do we need a motion to pay the $5?
Well, you've got to figure out where it's going to come from. I do not.
Fifty-five people.
Well, three of them, no pay.
Three of them no pay.
Let me see, is that the Adams, what, the Adams?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they set the time down for $18.
There's a bunch of others too. You've got library trustees, you've got planning board members.
I thought we agreed, we want an agreement on paying them yet.
She's loud.
Just to be made.
They won't hear you unless the microphone is here.
Just to be made. How come the rest of us had to pay for it out of our budgets? I paid for all my fire flights.
That's true.
Out of my budget. So if the town's going to pay for everybody else, the fire department wants to be reimbursed.
I don't believe we even voted to pay them. I thought there was some conversation like you were going to do.
Katie, we said they could all have an hour.
One hour's pay.
One hour's pay.
The ruling was whoever collected the paycheck from the town had to take the course.
Right.
That was the original vote.
I thought it was employees, but...
It was, it was employees and I put in the word volunteers and you said we can't make volunteers take it. I feel you can. They will represent the town, they're just as apt to take it as the elected officials are. But I, I don't know where you're going to find the money out of the budgets because this was not budgeted for. And there may be others, I'm, you know, I checked with Kim on a couple to see if they were paid. She said no, like the lifeguards. So it's got to come from somewhere and I'm not thinking, I don't know what the other budgets, department heads are thinking. You know, the police took theirs, I think a lot of the fire took theirs, we took ours and house. I don't know, I don't know what to tell you. Money's an issue this year, that's all I'm going to say.
These living people don't have an hour in the week, correct?
Nope.
So you'd have to come up with a fair.
They're not active, is what I guess I could say.
I wish we had made it a stipulation of employment, that you just take the course like most companies.
Well, that's what my email said, but people don't take it. We have no recourse.
Yeah, you can do that for new hires, but you can't do for people who have been on the...
On the retro, yeah.
I mean, we can start that policy, starting on our next hiring, that this is part of your hiring process is this course on PrimeX. But what do we do with the 11? Eight, eight individuals, because I already talked to the other three and they feel that the town needs the money more than them. So we scratch them.
And that's, that's part of my point too. Maybe something to look at when the policy committee updates some of the policies next year's budget.
So we're down to eight.
That we know of.
Correct.
I just think it's not really a good time to be doing this. $5 is not going to break anybody's pocket if they don't get it, but it's going to hurt the budgets that didn't budget for it, just saying.
Especially this year.
All right, so somebody want to, want to make a motion that these eight individuals will not get paid?
Go ahead. I said, go ahead.
Do you want me to make? I'll make a motion that these eight individuals will not get paid due to the town not having the funds. At least a second for discussion.
Second for discussion.
Yes, chief.
Now I'm lost here. Because I'm going to be up here quite a bit this evening. The Board of Selectmen takes a vote, makes it mandatory.
Yes.
But there's no repercussion for those that don't take it, so why are we wasting our time?
Absolutely.
Two.
We didn't get to that part yet, but go ahead. We're there.
You, you mentioned lifeguards, so the three lifeguards. You mean to tell me you can't pay them out of direct budget for three hours?
The lifeguards take it?
Yeah.
I had 23 of 24. I have the biggest department. I didn't budget it. You don't see me here asking to pay?
Well, the problem is that the trustees, they don't have a budget, correct?
They get a stipend, but it's not that much.
And that should come out of the town budget since you required it. But the other departments should come out of the department. I have the biggest budget and I didn't once ask any of my members to get paid.
All right, so the motion is to not pay them, second by Charlie. Any more discussion? So we'll vote. Kate?
Aye.
Charlie?
No.
Evan?
No.
Anna, no, so it fails. So we'll, we'll put this back on the agenda for the 21st and then we need to find out who also didn't take the course and what, and the course that the selectmen are going to take for those who didn't take it.
And an accurate amount of people that didn't, didn't do it.
Right.
I don't know if I can get that. I will send out another email, but if they don't respond, I have no idea. I, I, it takes up a lot of time. I don't have it. I've got deadlines.
Well, you know what? The town required this, the Board of Selectmen didn't.
Exact, no, the town did not. The Board of Selectmen did because of an issue we had.
So for one individual, the whole town's suffering now?
Well, that's what the board told me to do. I didn't make that decision.
Okay. All right, so the board's going to make the decision to pay them then.
But Nancy, you should know everybody that works in town. Everybody that's employed.
There's a lot of elected officials and...
Yeah, but there should, there should be a list of everybody that's in this, that works for this town, whether they're elected, appointed or whatever. And if you take that list and marry it against the ones that you got slips back for, you should find out who didn't take it, right?
With all due respect, you paid the department head. That's their job.
Well...
Easy as that.
Yeah, that's true too.
My boss told me, gave you a deadline for 24 members to do it.
Yep.
My job is to make sure those 24 did it.
Exactly.
Then I should be in front of you, not the 24 employees. So you gave an order for the department heads to do this through the town administrator. She should have been chasing people down. The department head should be doing it.
But they, she's going to know who took it and who didn't take it because she got the paperwork.
The only way I'm going to know is if they took it and give me a certificate. That's the only way.
That's what I'm saying.
But I sent the email out to all the department heads. I can't chase every person in this town.
So you just let us know who didn't respond, what department head, not the individual.
Can I just make one comment? Isn't the PrimeX course free?
Yep.
Yes.
Everyone to take?
Yep.
Yeah.
Everyone. So why are we paying people to sit and take a free course?
Because we voted to do that, Katie.
Because you, you can't make employees work for nothing. So if the employee's on a time clock, is a full-time employee, they do it during their eight hours.
Right.
Right.
For people who are on call, part-time, or on committees that we require them to do, that's, that's the sticking point right there, if they get paid or not.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
You're paying, you're paying half the town, you're not paying the other half.
Okay.
So I would just do one more email to the department heads, Nancy. Don't contact every individual and say, this is your last call. I want your, the employees' list who took it and who did not take it. And it will be on the agenda again on the 21st. End of discussion, okay. And B, harassment course, we did that. Bookkeeper PTO report. Do we just accept the memo?
So last year, Matt asked that we, in September, get a list from the bookkeeper to know who has a PTO remaining and for the department heads to make sure that they're using it so it's not being voted to carry over next year.
Okay. So all these hours to the right have to be used by the end of December 31st, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And if they don't, it can go in their bank, but they can't. I think the board was trying to avoid carrying it over so now they not only have two weeks next year, but now they have all these days as well.
Being the bank is carrying over, right?
No, it goes into an account and it can only be used for emergencies and that's only if the board approves.
So if Joe Jones has $200 left over this year, doesn't use them by December 31st, they go into a bank?
I think they can put so many hours into the bank, I don't have that in front of me.
And do they get to use that?
Only for emergencies.
Which would be what?
As, let's say somebody gets in a car accident and they're laid up for six weeks, then they could tap into that because it's always they...
So they can't use it for sick days?
No.
Or vacation days?
And anytime anybody uses it, they have to come to the board. Each case is, is a separate case.
So I want to understand, they can't use it for sick days or vacation days? And if they resign or retire, they can't collect that?
No.
And bank is different from carryover?
Right.
Okay. So...
And that's the whole idea, to make sure your employees are taking the time off, resting their brains and, and, you know, getting out of the workforce and not...
There's really two that really stick out to me. I wonder who, that they need to start taking them. You guys see anything different than the two? Kate, you got the list in front of you?
I mean, that's an email that I could send out to the department heads as well and just say you need to check and see where your employees stand.
This one's six and, is that an eight or five? 618 hours.
Yep, this is 30868.
308. And these are divided on into what, 40 hours?
No, it's the permanent part-time as well as the full-time.
No, someone has 600. Do I put the 40 into 600, it comes out to the weeks?
Yeah, I think that the max is six weeks. But only, and I don't have the policy in front of me, that's something that we need to look up, but only so many hours can be carried forward or banked.
I can give you, employees may choose to put up to 80 hours per year of unused PTO into a bank account
There you go.
of time to be used for long-term illnesses.
So that's two weeks.
Every year.
Yep.
So...
For a maximum of 720 hours.
So if this says banked hours, they're not entitled to take that unless it's a long term.
Unless it's an emergency and they come to the board for your approval to use it.
So where is...
It's for long-term illnesses.
So are we looking at the PTO balance column for this year then? Not the end column?
I don't have it up. Do you have it up, Ty?
Are you looking at this?
The PTO balance is in the middle. That's what they have to use by the end of this year?
Yes, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So it shows what they're allowed, what they've taken and what the balance is.
And is there really like a deadline, so we have to let them know they have to take it?
Well, if the board wants to... If the board wants them to be able to carry time over into next year, you can do that on a case-by-case basis. But if, last year we heard the board doesn't want to allow carryovers. So people should be using their time unless they've got a good reason why they can't.
So why don't we just send that email out to department heads and just reminding them, the employees, to start using their PTO time because it's not going to get carried over? What are they going to lose? To me, if you go in the bank hours, you're losing it.
Yeah, unless you have a catastrophic issue.
Okay. You guys good with that?
Good with it.
Yeah? Kate, you good with that?
Yeah, I have it in front of me now, finally, I pulled it up, but I, it's very blurry. Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay. Okay, D, bookkeeper memo, Gettysburg Flag Works invoice. So Nancy, you put this on here because you don't know where the money's coming from, correct?
Well, read Kim's email on that. You can read it out loud if you want to, so people know what you're referring to.
So the attached invoice from Gettysburg Flag Works has been remitted to me for payment. The invoice amount of $2,035.62 and is for the purchase of 30 plus two grave markers and shipping and handling costs. I have also included a copy of the requisition 2385 and a corresponding quote and sales order for a total of 1,915.12 for 30 grave markers with shipping and handling costs. The March 11th requisition was not signed and per the April 6th, 2021 Board of Selectment meeting minutes, the board tabled the fire department requisition 2385 for bronze grave markers until it can be determined where the funds will come from. Minutes attached. Kindly advise on how I should proceed to pay this.
And if it is to be paid, from which budget the expenses will be applied?
Chief, do you have anything to say on this?
First of all, I think last year, I was putting in warrant articles. That was one of the warrant articles. I was told by the board and Town Hall that there was too many warrant articles that the board would fine the funds, since this is memorial markers for deceased firefighters. I tore up that warrant article. There was a heated discussion in regards to those markers because I remember Evan making a comment because he's a selectman firefighter because it got into a, that night, it was a nightmare.
I remember.
Okay? Part of that, I believe, that was part of the prime event and everything else. I was told all requisitions were approved. So I ordered the grave markers. We can't take the grave markers back because if the board wants, you can go to the cemetery and start uprooting them. Okay? I don't believe we're having this discussion. Goes back to what I said 10 minutes ago about the board taking a vote to do mandatory harassment training, but we don't know which way's up, which way's down. I was told to order them, I ordered them. I was told not to put a warrant article, that the board would fine the funds. Okay, you guys have been raping and pilfering the fire department budget for years and we're going to discuss that again tonight because I stood up here about three years ago saying the exact same thing for that new fire station. Okay? You guys need to get your act together, with all due respect.
Anyone remember the minutes for that night?
I've got to be honest with you, I don't, but...
I remember Evan saying what he said. Evan, do you remember what we called that?
I'm...
It had to be in April.
What he just said, I do remember that.
March 16.
I remember the warrant article part, that he was going to write the warrant article and we told him no.
Yeah, because normally that small of an amount, we don't need it. It's usually in the budget somewhere. But I don't think that was budgeted in any of the budgets and that's why the table, the board, I'm sorry, tabled the requisition because we, we don't know where the funds are coming from. I know there's a lot of issues with the truck repairs, so the chief's budget's taking a hit. There's, there's other budgets that are taking a hit. We can't spend, spend money we didn't budget for.
So did the board tell him not to do it?
They did. The requisition was denied, he was here.
Now, the board told him not to do the warrant article?
No, no, I told him normally.
Because I'll stand here today and tell you, Nancy mentioned it and you guys mentioned it. I'll tell you right now, with all due respect, I don't care if it's 50 bucks, I'm writing warrant articles. Because you guys say one thing and forget what you said. This is nuts. This is truly nuts.
Well, yeah, we're not paying our bills either.
No.
We'll get there. We'll get there tonight.
Well, we, we got to pay the bill.
Can we take it out of the...
It's not fair to the company.
Town Hall.
My, my, I was just, my recollection was only that we wanted to table it till we found where the funds came from. It's not that we are against the markers. That's it.
And we never looked for the money.
Yeah, but that still, if, that was, yeah, but we still need to approve the requisition. Even, then we should have found the money and then either approved or not approved. That's the way it should have gone, but that's life.
Well, they were ordered in March, delivered in April. We're in September and the bill's not paid yet.
Well, they were ordered in March from a, this is, this is an April meeting. We said we wanted to table it till we found out where we get the money, but it was ordered beforehand. Is that what you're saying? Okay.
No.
Confused.
The, the original meeting, that that was brought up and I'll remind everybody. It turned into a you-know-what kind of show. Okay? Because Matt wanted Evan to recuse himself, you to recuse yourself and the board just lost it that night with requisitions. You guys were approving things, there was arguments between the board. That's when Evan made the comment about him, God forbid, when he passes, is he even going to be able to get one of these markers because he's a selectman? You guys might have forgot that nightmare, but some of us sitting on this side did not forget the fights that you guys had that night. So that's probably why you don't remember voting on it, because that night you voted on some requisitions. I would never go out and order something unless I was told to order it. Okay? You guys have destroyed my budget anyways, you want, take it out of my budget. It, it deals with the fire department anyways, so anything in this town that deals with the fire department, even though I don't put it in, you take out of my budget. You did it for the fire station, you're going to do it again tonight. You did it two months ago. I don't believe we're having a discussion about this. Honestly, I, I don't believe this. It's grave markers for deceased members of the department. You want to talk about disrespect?
I, I really need to interrupt here because we definitely respect everything you do.
Then vote on it.
The only issue is where are we getting the money from? It's not against the markers, it's simply finding the money. So are we on agreement, Select Board?
Yes.
Yes, no one is against the markers.
All right, so where can we take this money out of?
Can we take it from the 8 Merrimack Road revolving fund?
No, that warrant article is for renovations and additions.
Does it cemetery, since it deals with deceased?
They don't have any money in there.
They don't anymore?
And this is the problem, we're getting so many of these bills that we don't know where to take the money from. We didn't budget for it, so we're going to deplete every budget until, you know...
Well, if he said we voted on to purchase them...
Michael?
Well, somebody might have told him, there's no motion by the board.
Mike, you can speak, sorry.
Good evening, Mike Povero. I'm going to throw my 10 cents into this whole debate. I don't know all the particulars, but I know the overall situation here and I'll just recap and fill in where I missed. The voters voted for 649.
No, we're not there, Mike.
We're not there yet.
Where, where are we at? Are we talking about the truck?
No.
I'm going back to the seat, thank you.
We're talking about the grave markers, Mike. No, we're going to get there.
So we, we can't let it go to 2022 anyway, we got to pay it.
So pick a budget you want to take it out of. I don't know where to tell you to take it out of.
Well, who has the most money?
Huh?
I need the amounts of each budget, who, where, where the money's in.
Well, you don't have to make a, well, I guess you do. I don't know, I don't know what to tell you.
Does Kim know?
I'm going to make a motion to have Kim pay the, the bill out of whatever budget she feels fit that can handle it.
She won't do that. That's not acceptable.
That's not her job.
Can't do that.
You need to give us some feedback on what budget, who has the most money or who has the money to pay it.
Did you look at your budget sheets that you get every month to see where there is funding or possible?
It's not in my head tonight, though.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, where, it's nothing to do with the flags or the fire department. We don't know where to pay it from. It's not our decision to make this...
It's your decision to tell us what budgets have the money, though.
Right now, they're all struggling, Larry.
Yeah, but you're still not telling us how much money's left in each one of the budgets.
I can't give you that right now.
Chief. If you speak to the association, would the association be able to pay for it and then you reimburse them in 2022? Is that something that's possible?
I don't have a problem with that. But again...
I don't think you can do that.
I have to do the dirty work for five people on that side that were elected by the voters.
I don't think you can do that.
Do your job. I don't think I, first of all, I don't think I can reimburse them. Think Larry's 100% correct.
I'm just trying to, I, I'm doing my job.
All right. I mean, last I knew, I thought you guys increased the town budget, your side of the fence, by quite a bit.
I can't get the numbers on the balances. That's what we've been asking.
Where, okay. Where's the latest monthly balance? Because it's not in my inbox.
That's what I'm trying to find out, Kate, the, the balances of, of budgets that we can take this out of.
And it's not in the meeting today. Oh, thank you. Who, what wonderful person just put this up? What have we got? Okay, balance.
When's that dated?
That is, I believe, August 12th.
Ooh.
So you give an idea, you got an idea here.
It looks good, I can't see that. Huh? Do I have money?
EMD.
We'll get that checked out.
No.
Okay, so which ones can we legally even take it from, you guys?
Well, it's not fair to, you can't take it out of like transportation, you can't take it out of the police department, you can't take it out of...
Yeah, but what can we?
Something that the town owns.
Government buildings?
So whether it be the government buildings, 8 Merrimack Road.
We can't do 8 Merrimack Road.
But what about general government? That seems too.
Or the, what's the general fund called?
Highways and streets? No.
The one we have $2 million in.
Oh, unexpendited fund balance.
Unexpendited fund balance.
We haven't got permission to take money from the balance.
And Nancy said she wanted in September a full amount of all the departments that wanted money out of there, and she was going to make one hit. Correct?
Yeah, we'll send a letter, but they don't, it's got to be an emergency. They won't do it just because you over expended your budget. That's what I'm trying to tell you.
So is that the same for general government buildings? Same thing?
No.
Is it wrong of me to look at this and say Cemetery has $6,788.35?
Cemetery has spent their budget, I believe.
They seem, well, not here, but.
Not on the.
Right here, they have 6788 senses in that category. Can we reach out to them and see if we can do that?
All I can say is everybody budgeted what they need, and now we're taking away from what the people actually budgeted for their needs. Take it out of general government buildings. When your budgets are over expended, it falls back on the board. We budgeted a fair budget, and we limited the warrant articles because the board didn't want a whole bunch of warrant articles because of the COVID and all the issues we were having.
Well, unfortunately, we have to find it from somewhere at this point, regardless of who pointing fingers. So.
Motion, get motion.
Motion to pay this.
I'll make a motion to turn around and take the money for the markers out of general government buildings. Wait a second.
What line item? Do you have that budget up, Diane?
I can't.
Yep, he has it. It's some, wait a minute.
Yes, I did. Any discussion? Okay, Charlie?
Aye.
Edwin?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye, and also going forward, we should be very careful about all money spent. If there's any confusion, we should just check.
Kim will need a line item that you want that to come out of.
Excuse me?
Kim would like a line item where that's to come out of.
Where's the lines?
I don't have it. Could you put it back up?
The expense will be applied to, but without seeing that, I don't know if we have funds in there either.
Diane, could you put that up again?
Do you have the lines up there?
I do not.
I don't know if that one's broken down, Diane, because that's a.
Hang on one second. This one. I just want to screen.
We'll get that to you by the end of the night.
So these are broken down as of August 12th, so you want to go to?
Government.
What's that one? It's 11,000?
Hold on, let's look. Okay, so these are.
How about chemical toilets?
Are they open, they're open now, right?
All of our budgeting, and I hate to keep saying this, we budgeted right to the exact amount we needed for the number of months that we needed them for.
Yeah, I know. So chemical toilets, so are we still using those?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Summer grounds maintenance, that's done, right? For this year?
No, we're still, we're still mowing lawns.
In summer? Okay, I'm just saying, do you think 14,000 is going to be left mowing lawns for the rest of the summer? This is up to date?
This is not up to date. Okay, this is from August 12th, so.
Okay, is there any way we can just get more information? Because I'm thinking that that may be the one thing that will have room.
I can almost guarantee you won't because that budget had to, was used for the sprinkler heads that needed to be fixed and all the mowing.
Okay, okay. Repairs, maintenance has stars. Budget reduced.
What's that third item?
What about repairs, maintenance?
Third one down, ain't enough money. Third one down, there's not enough money. What's the one with 14,000 left?
What's the one with the 14,000 balance?
Which one?
Under electricity?
That's the ground maintenance one. Is that the grounds one?
The 14.
Or above that, electricity?
We can't do that. Electricity, we got to leave.
Everything is budgeted right down to the dollar, pretty much.
Other than repairs, maintenance, which could, that is the only one you're not sure of. It could be a big problem if we're short, or we could get lucky.
What if?
I don't have it up.
What if you do this? One second. Let me go back. What if you take $1,000 out of cable?
Are we, can we do that? I don't think we can.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay. You know, worst case scenario, you don't have anybody, you're going to be here in person and no recordings.
My recommendation to the board would be to take it from the general government buildings under the repairs and maintenance line.
That's what I was kind of thinking, but not, is there any, is it worth discussing with Cemetery if they could provide some of it first?
They never have money left over. They budget right to the T.
Can I forego the rest of my stipend? I mean, at this point, I just want to get this done with.
No, so put it under the general government buildings, under the repairs and maintenance, and then at the end of the year, we'll see where we sit. But I'm telling you, we budgeted everything as close as possible, so not to have the budget be raised.
Okay, that's where it's coming from.
So Charlie made the motion to have, to pay this bill out of the general government line?
Yep.
Line item, repairs and maintenance, and who's second?
Edwin.
Edwin.
And it's 4-0.
And then you're going to vote on that?
We already did.
We already did vote.
4-0.
4-0.
But you've changed your motion.
All right, Edwin?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I have an aye.
Thank you.
Okay, Eve, fire department new truck punch list and prices. Charles.
We'll let him go first.
I'll have my partner crime go. As Nancy said it 1,000 times this evening, fire department heads put just enough in their budgets to run their budgets. Okay? We had a discussion over a year ago on this new truck, the difference between the stock, the leased truck, the truck, and the difference to equipment. I proposed to the board 649,000, whatever it was, and change. The board voted on it. It went to the voters. The voters voted on it. It was approved. I set out for a truck, to get a truck delivered to the store, done with 649. The board took a lease for 629 for the truck. The board was told that back last April, June, May, whatever it was. It was because we had to sit down after the warrant article and finish building the truck. I said it back then. Greenwood calls a change orders. If you move a switch an inch, it's a change order. At the end of the pre-build, it was 11,700 and change. I talked to the chairman at that time, Mr. Burrell. He had the same feeling that Mr. Foot did and everybody else did. The voters voted for 649. The truck cost was 629, 11,800. You didn't go over the 649, you're fine. Being who I am and not trusting the five U's.
Wasn't me at the time. Thank you.
I asked for a public meeting. Through Zoom, it went back and forth, and that discussion went back and forth. No, you got 649 to spend. Then come to find out, no, we only have 629 to spend. So the board took $20,000 away from this side of the fence to build the truck. During that meeting, there was a discussion back and forth. Mr. Melvin said, in a minute, watch the video. Selectman Melvin went back and forth and said, whoever worked on the lease, go back and renegotiate the lease for 649,000, what the voter said. Apparently, that was never done because I'm standing up here again. A week after that, Selectman Michaels makes a vote to take $7,700 from somewhere to pay down on that 11,800. Again, somebody didn't do their job. Okay? Then about two months ago, now the truck's ready to be delivered. We have to mount. I included certain things in my budget, because I, I don't know about yous, none of you, nobody else at Two Town Hall, millions and millions in fire apparatus, so I might know a thing or two about it. Okay? We have a discussion. Nobody went back to the lease company for 649. So instead, you guys stole from Peter to pay Paul. You guys took 11,800 and threw it in the fire department budget, which that's why my budget's totally screwed, and then took out about $21,000 out of it. So you guys took all the money that I put in to finish the truck. That wasn't part of the 649 people. It was not part of the 649. Never was. If you do your math, that truck actually came in about 648,000. I did my job. But then again, just like the fire station, the board thought they knew better, and they took, ran with the ball with the fire, never listening to me. Then the board tells me, spend no money for that fire truck. No money. So I can't even buy a $27 fitting to put a hose on a $649,000 truck sitting in the Butler Building. But in the great wisdom of the board of selectmen, that you just spent 15, 20 minutes trying to figure out where you're going to find money, you guys vote to have an ex-selectman do an investigation at $25 an hour to find out why you guys didn't do your job. But you found money to pay him. But now I'm in front of you for money to finish the truck. That's ludicrous. You hired the guy, this project was derailed from the beginning, the way the warrant article was written. The argument and the heated discussion I had with my liaison to change the warrant article, because I've never seen a warrant article written that way. But yet you hired that individual to do an investigation. All I got to do is look at the minutes. Charlie, you said whoever worked on the lease, go back and get the money. I believe his name is Jimmy Dow from Department of Revenue, said, hey, chief, you don't have an extra $20,000, because you guys didn't, you had an escape clause. He even said, go back to the lease company. Okay? So you're all worried about money. You tell the voters that you have a brand-new truck sitting there. Tonight, you vote on it? Fine. I don't care. I'm past the point dealing with you people. You don't vote on it, your $649,000 fire truck can sit in the Butler Building. Okay? Or pick what other fire truck you want me to strip, to take out of service, to finish this truck, because you guys didn't do your job that you were elected for. Okay? I said it, and I told your investigator, because the questions he asked is a witch hunt, that he's looking for one of your heads, not my head. And I told him to go back and ask that question. Whose job, after the selection said, go back and get $20,000, fix the note, whose job was that? And whose job was it after Kate made a motion to pay $7,700? Whose job was it to do that? And then I get yelled at, that I should have known that you guys were not going to do your job, that I should have incumbent money from last year because you guys don't do your job? This is nuts. The department head cannot even sign a piece of paper for a new truck. You guys have to have a public meeting so the chairman can sign, but he can sign anybody else's. He just signed a lease for another department, but you guys have to have a public meeting to authorize him to sign. This is nuts. The chairman for the past two, three years were able to sign everything. Life was easier when you guys hired people to do the job. You trusted them. You gave them the authority to sign paperwork, and if they made a mistake, they were held accountable. The micromanaging that you guys do is nuts. You guys didn't learn your lesson with the fire station. You didn't listen to the committee. You didn't listen to the fire chief. You didn't listen to the project manager. And then you guys ripped, what, 30, 40 grand out of my budget, out of the EOC budget in grants, to outfit the fire station? Hello, McFly's? I paid for the radios. I paid for the TVs. I paid for some of the furniture. I paid for some of the keypads out of my budget, my equipment budget, because five of yous didn't do your job. Five of you thought you knew better. You guys thought you knew better for this new fire truck. Okay? You answer to the people while you got a fire truck sitting there, and I can't even order a $27 fitting, but you can hire an investigator for $25 an hour. But I'm the one that's out of it. I'm the only one that sees something wrong with that. And you guys voted to hire the guy. The halfway guard is here. How much you going to pay him? Go ahead. How much you going to pay him? How much did you vote to pay the investigator? $25 an hour. How many hours does he have?
15.
15 hours. Hey, there you go.
That was all non-public, and it wasn't.
He came into the fire station, with all due respect, he walked into the fire station, walked into the fire station with members there when we had this discussion.
I know.
So if it was supposed to be non-public, he shouldn't have walked into the fire station and had the discussion.
Okay, fine.
So why, come back. Why can't you buy a $27 park? Who said you couldn't?
Because I have no money. You guys stripped my equipment account. Let's be serious here. And I said it when you guys were stripping it two months ago, that some of this stuff is four to eight weeks out. Vote on it today, some of this stuff is four to eight weeks out.
If you had the $20,000 back, would you be fine right now?
No.
Excuse me?
I said if the 20,000, so from what I'm understanding, the mix-up, I think might have been because it was 649, but the, I don't know where it went down, but with the trade-in value, someone changed it. I'm not sure what happened. But let just say, if you had the 20,000 now, would you be fine?
If I had 649, I wouldn't be wasting my breath standing up here, Kate, because then I would have done, then Kate, with all due respect, I would have done my job. And if I had to stay up here, I would expect the board of selectmen to hold me to the fire for screwing up.
Okay, so just wait, hold on. We're going to try to figure out how to solve this, but you're saying that if we could get the 20,000, things would be better now. Right?
That's what the vote, if you would do what the voters voted on, yes.
But we have to deal with what is now, unfortunately. So I'm just trying to figure out.
Correct. So now you get to find whatever that's up there, five grand, six grand. So now you get to find six grand so I can finish outfitting the truck. So yes, Kate, to answer your question, if you would have taken out 649, like the voter said, like Charlie said, like Jamie Dow said, like the fire chief said, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
And the issue we're looking to find is how we went from 649 to 29, what went awry, correct?
629, if you look at the lease, I don't have the lease, Kate. If you look at the paperwork you signed, 629 is for a fire truck.
You're right. I think that there was some confusion around like.
Correct. And if you remember, Kate, if you remember the meeting that we had the discussion to go back and forth for the 649, there was a price increase for the truck.
Right, I remember that.
And then there was the slide-out tray, slideboards, and a few other things that Mr. Foot said, well, that's all part of the truck. He's 100% correct. That's all part of the truck, including the mounting. That gives you your 649. 629 is the truck. The warrant article said to equip.
I totally understand that now. I'm just trying to figure out what went wrong and the change.
Charlie, when that meeting occurred. Hold on, Kate. When that meeting occurred to go back to the lease company, who did you direct that to the next day or?
I mentioned it to the board that night.
And then that's where it died?
That's where it died.
He actually, if I may, because you didn't pay me extra. Charlie actually said whoever worked, he addressed it to me, and I says, I didn't work on the lease. Okay? That was the same meeting, I says, your next fire chief can buy the next truck, because I'm done dealing with this micromanaging. Charlie then turned around and said, whoever worked on the lease to go back, renegotiate for 649, that we might even be able to get a better interest rate.
Nancy, remember that?
You can't do that because it was 649 on that first year, which was 2020. He renegotiated, brought it down, brought it down to 629, so it was only that one year that you had that difference. And each year after that is 629 a year.
That doesn't make sense.
That's the payment and the interest.
No, there was, just so you guys know, the original agreement was 649, the exact votes.
Right.
Then the board entertained the other bits, and that's where it got a little gray. Then the truck came in, the truck, not the warrant, warrant article is to fully equip. The truck came in at 629. Okay? The selectmen, and I don't know how it works, but the selectmen had, on that 629, you could pay upfront, or you could pay a year after the lease. Okay? Even the dealer said you could go back and renegotiate, because you just, at that time, you only, the ink was not even dry on the lease agreement. And it was the same company that two weeks later, three weeks later, and even months before that, wrote one for 649. The ink wasn't even dry.
I understand that. I want to go back to her question. You said the first year was 649.
That's what the people voted, but the lease that was negotiated was for 629. So the following payments were lowered from 76,000 a year. So the following payments were lowered from $76,000 a year down to $69,000 a year. So there was no 649 anymore.
But we voted for 649.
On that first year. And then it was renegotiated.
649 should've been the whole note.
No.
Ten years. Yeah.
We didn't have the lease agreement with all the payment schedule and all of that. And it just, it didn't pan out to be 649. Only that first year, even though that amount was budgeted, the $76,000 a year payment came down to $69,000. There's your money in between. It went down to 629.
It doesn't, 649 one year, it was in March, I would assume, the election.
When they voted.
In 2020, correct?
But it got renegotiated, that.
Who renegotiated the 629?
I thought the chief did. We didn't.
You guys. You guys.
We didn't renegotiate with the lease.
Oh, yeah, you did, because if you remember, you originally ordered an E1. Then you decided to take bids, and then you went and ordered a Pierce. You voted for a Pierce, so I had to notify Pierce, everything for the Pierce.
What was the final amount we voted on?
Technically, your final amount, according to previous selectmen, Gonya made a motion, seconded by Kate, to authorize the chief to spend up to $649,000 for a fire truck.
Okay, so that's the bottom line. It's not E1 or Pierce or whatever, so don't confuse.
Okay, this was for the E1.
The confusion.
This was for the E1.
Uh-huh.
Selectman Gonya made a motion to authorize the fire chief to spend up to $649,000 not to exceed.
Correct.
Seconded by Kate.
Correct.
Okay? Board had a discussion. Then you guys voted for 629.
The lease was renegotiated.
And you voted for 629.
I thought the chief.
That same night?
Yeah, that same night.
And you didn't say anything?
I've been complaining about this since the get-go.
No, right, right at that moment where you voted.
Listen to me. What's in your minutes, black and white, you gotta watch the videos. Okay? It's real simple. Real simple. Even the dealer, the confusion is, people have E1, Greenwood, and the lease company thinking it's the same person. It's not. If you made, and I said this, if you made an overpayment in the first year of $76,000, you lost it. That's on the truck. You can't go back and get that money to put it to Greenwood, who's the dealer. Okay? At the end of the day, what I'm getting is, nobody from that side spent 30 seconds and called up the lease company and said, hey, we just signed the lease for 629, we realize we need 649. What's it gonna take? At the end of the day, that's not what happened. At the end of the day, the board sent the fire chief out for 649. Even in that meeting, that you got all upset, 649, go get the, 649, 649. The motion that Kate made for the $7,700, I'll stand here today and tell you, that was the difference between the $76,000, that was paid to the lease company, and the $69,000. That money's gone. So even if somebody tried to get it, you'd never get it. That went to the lease company.
Well, that should come off the end.
Okay, we'll wait 20, we'll wait 10 years to get our money.
I know, but it should come off on the end.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, just wanna remind you of our meeting protocols. And that unless you extend, Mr. Alcindino, we gotta move on.
All right, well, he's got the requisitions, so we're gonna go over the requisitions and find out where we're gonna get the money.
All right.
But Donkey's requisitions, just remember that the truck is not gonna go on the road. This is the punch list that Matt asked for, minimum, to get that truck up and running, correct?
Yep.
Okay. This was at the public meeting that we had last Tuesday. Last Tuesday at 8 Merrimack Road. Charlie, if you wanna read the first one, and then we have any questions, we can ask the chief.
Okay.
What it is.
Requisition 2582, in the amount of 1825. And this is for installing the new engine, service call charge 105.
The radios.
Yep. Antenna kit, install hardware kits, installed two mobile radios, antennas, and wireless headset. We already approved, didn't we?
You bought the radios.
Yep.
You bought the radios?
Yeah, you bought the radios. Guess what? Out of my budget that I put in for 2021.
Obviously, you want, is this the money to reimburse your budget?
As long as you guys don't take money out of my radio account, it should be fine. But I can't do my budget, because you guys are taking money out of everything.
Okay, so that's number one, 1825. Number two is 2583.
We'll do all three, and we'll total them up, and then we'll figure it out.
2583, in the amount of $1,816. And this is for task force adapter, 1.5. NAFHC, 2.5 by 50 yellow poly flow hose couplers. Four-inch stoves, and four-inch stoves, 15-inch soft sleeve, yellow. This is the hose.
Got the hose and the fittings and the couplings?
Yeah. Yeah, spanner wrench.
Spanner wrench.
Yep. Hydrant wrench, fire hookups, connections, task force elbow, four-inch, for rocker lug. NFHC, 1.75 10 hose. And performance advantage, hand lock, plaque. Shipping, no cost for shipping. The fire hooks, hydrant, ram, one bag, he removed.
Okay, the next one is?
Next one is 2584, in the amount of $3,514. And he's got here, Firematic was coming out of my budget until the board used those funds to pay for the new truck.
What's that for?
For the rest of the hoses.
That's for the rest of the hose.
In the?
Yep.
In the north.
So your total is $6,992?
I didn't add enough whatever it is.
To get that truck on the road? And this?
Did anybody add it up?
I, if my adding's correct, $6,992.
Okay.
Diane, is that right?
What?
I'm just asking Diane, like, I don't have a calendar here.
So it's 1825, 2583, and 2584.
$7,135.
You got 3514.
3514?
Yep.
I didn't get that one. Hold on.
Trying to save you money.
3514.
No, not that one, John.
I took the rim out.
Right, you took, that's the 1816. That one was 3693, and then 1825.
All right, we'll start off with 1825.
Yep.
What's the next one?
1816.
1816.
And 3514.
3514. 7155?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So this is the punch list that he needs to get the truck on the road.
Yep.
This is the punch list that we discussed at the meeting last week, but we didn't discuss where the money was coming from. So we have two options. Come up with 7155, or the truck sits in the Butler Building until January 1st, so we get more money. Until he gets his new budget.
Can they take this out of the equipment and repair? You know, the equipment?
Do you have anything in capital reserve?
The capital reserve?
That you can borrow and put back?
Capital.
Yeah.
Take money out of capital reserve, the voters have to vote to put it back. So you're asking the voters?
Well, that's what happens anyway. Every time you wanna put money in, you have to ask the voters.
You wanna, so you wanna take it out of capital reserve? Last I knew, you have to have a public meeting to ask for it to come out of.
No, just the selectmen, they're the agents, they can vote.
Do you know how much is in there?
It was to buy other equipment, but go ahead.
I think it was $55,000 or something.
Well, we gotta, you gotta.
No, you gotta listen to the guy that you hired seven years ago.
All right, so where do you want it to come from, then?
You should've went back and bought your 20 grand.
Well, that's too late now.
And take it out of your budget.
My budget's already expended.
You guys keep on taking it out of the fire. This is nuts. This is nuts. And then we're gonna have a discussion, because you're gonna take out of my budget, which I understand.
That's not your budget in capital reserve.
I know, that's what I'm saying. Engine one, that's gonna go get fixed tomorrow, that's out of service. Engine two, we're gonna be back. We'll be back, because you gotta pay those guys to fix the trucks. This is what happens when you take people's money out of the budget. Just do your job. Take it out of capital reserve. You guys answer to the voters. I don't have to answer to the voters.
We might as well throw this one right in there with it. This is.
What's that?
This is for the tires. What truck is that, chief? I don't, I don't know, I don't know the number of the truck.
That was, which was planned way in advance. That was to take the tires off of engine two, the vehicle that's being traded in.
Right.
That has brand-new tires, to go on to the tanker, tank five.
That we're keeping.
That we're keeping, that its tires are outdated per NFPA by 16 years.
Yep.
It goes the same thing. You don't wanna do that? Not a problem. We'll take the tanker out of service.
And we, what I did is, I got two options on that. If we bought 10 new tires for that truck, it would be $6,457.30. But if we bought four tires and had them swap the tires over for us, the good ones, right? Because they're brand-new on that truck. So why let them brand-new tires go? We can do it for 251540. And to me, that's the way to go.
So 25, to swap them out?
Swap them out and four brand-new tires. So now we got all new tires on that truck.
That's a good, but wait, was he already planning to do that, to put them on tanker five? Is that what I'm hearing?
What was the 25 what?
That was, that's a good deal, as long as, wait.
251540.
A huge saving to get the new truck going.
And just so you know, Charlie, what was it saying?
9670.
That's if those tires are still installed.
9670?
967040.
Forty cents.
They did have them, they did have them.
Make a motion to come out of capital reserve.
Motion to take $9,670.40 at a capital reserve fund.
Okay, I'll second that.
Second, for discussion, any discussion?
Yep, just quick. Charlie knows. You might have, since we wait so long, it is Newton. There might not be tires there. So if there's not tires there, what do you wanna do?
Didn't Charlie just check?
I, I did, and what they had, Katie, is they had, they had 10 or 11 tires left.
Okay.
And we didn't own them.
Okay.
They got piles of tires up there that are already owned by somebody else, they just haven't installed them.
If this passes, you can check into it tomorrow and see if they have them.
That's a good idea.
Katie, any more discussion on where the money's coming from?
Reluctantly, I don't, I think we have to get the, the truck out.
All right, roll call. Evan?
I'm in favor.
Charlie?
Hi.
Kate?
Aye.
I'm an aye. So it comes out of capital reserve, out of his $55,000.
Now, does the board want me to turn around and tell them to hold them tires if they're there tomorrow?
Well, we just approved the money.
I know.
Yeah, I think so.
We have to wait for that truck to come back, right?
I'm asking first.
Oh. I have a vote to have Charlie contact the tire manufacturer to hold those tires.
Aye.
Motion that?
I make, with all due respect.
Second.
I make a motion, the way you guys operate. Honestly, I make a motion.
Chief.
Jimmy, you didn't sign nothing without the board making a motion.
Chief, at this time, you're a little out of line, so.
You make that motion?
Motion to authorize Charlie to.
Secure the tires.
Secure the tires.
I'll second that. Second by Kate. All right. Evan?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Charlie, aye. Okay, you got it.
Can we bring Mike up?
H, sure, yeah.
Can we bring?
Yeah.
We're gonna bring H up, Mike, road agent paving bids.
You don't wanna stay for the next one? F?
What is it?
Fire warden?
No, it's all yours. All yours.
Good evening, Mike Povero, road agent. I'm gonna stop by telling you, I don't even wanna talk about numbers right now. Not even a little bit. So this is the paving. You guys should all have it.
Yep.
Pretty self-explanatory. I solicited, I think, seven, let me see, one, two, six. It is, two of them were non-responsive, the rest of them did respond to the bid and the bid spec. You can see the low bidder is posted there. This is a similar situation than last year. I don't really know the low bidder. I did some reference checking in the past two or three weeks. He didn't come back with a Stella reference check. He didn't come back with one that I would say, we absolutely don't use him. But there's no way he is to the quality of Bell &amp; Flynn. Like, not even close. So I know it's, but I mean, I, I did the same thing last year. I told you to trust in my decision-making, and I think anybody that goes down Thornel Road understands why I picked the guy I picked.
It's a good job.
Yeah.
He's one of the best in the area. I'm always not a fan of low bidder. So the decision is yours. But I've recommended using Bell &amp; Flynn.
Mike, what road is this?
Heath.
Heath Street?
Heath.
The whole thing, or just half, half, right?
No, just a piece. It's from, it's from North Main Street to just beyond Greeny Park.
Perfect.
Everything else has been done.
Yep. Motion to accept the bid from Bell &amp;, Bell &amp; Flynn?
Bell &amp; Flynn.
Bell &amp; Flynn, do I say the amount right?
Yep.
Yep. $89,880.
Second.
Second by Charlie, any discussion?
From your budget, Mike.
Kate?
All an I.
Edwin?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
I'm an I, okay.
And again, for, just for anyone watching, what, what a road agent's saying is very important, that we want a job well done. It's okay, we don't have to take the lowest bidder, we take the bid that's best for the town, that will last long that we know. Because I know sometimes people are confused about that, and that's why we're choosing Bell and Flynn.
On the next one, just to make a motion.
I didn't understand that, but-
She just said, just so people are aware in the public, sometimes we don't choose the lowest bidder because of, you know, we want the job done right.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Nancy, to answer your question-
Yeah.
The funds will come out of my line item on paving.
Okay.
And then it'll come out of Highway Block Grant, and that's why my paving's late this year, I had to wait for the deposit on the July account from the Highway Block Grant, so I had enough funds for that.
Okay, all right.
But there is enough funds in the account to pay for that.
Thank you very much for doing the research.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, next item on each, and a forest fire warden appointment. Charlie?
I'm gonna make a motion to appoint the fire chief, the forest fire warden. Do I have a second?
You have a name?
John R. Elcindino.
Oh, John Elcindino.
You need to make a motion so people know what you're saying.
Okay, John Elcindino.
Second.
I mess up his name, that's why.
Second by Edwin, any discussion? This is for three years, or he can resign.
If he chooses.
If he chooses, but it's a three-year appointment.
And just so you know, you might want to mention that you're recommending to the forest, forest ranger? He appoints, you don't, you're just recommending.
Recommending?
Yeah.
Okay, Kate?
I.
Edwin?
No.
Charlie?
Hi.
I'm an I. Four one?
Three one.
Three one.
Three one.
But no one else wanted to do it, right? That's my other understanding. Right?
Well, I mean, it's very time-sensitive because at the end of the year, and we have bills that we have to send to the state, we can't send them to the state unless we have a fire warden in place.
Okay.
So that's why we, we gave it to him as the fire chief right now, but it could change next year, it could change next week, or next month, or whatever.
So it's a temporary appointment that we're recommending, right?
They don't take temporary appointments, he's appointed for three years, but has the option-
To resign if he chooses.
To say, I don't want to do it.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Safety committee policy update. Who put that on?
Bill Landry updated our safety policy. Primex recommended that we do a cyber policy. So he's put that into the, into the safety policy. And he also has the new signature page for the policy for all of the selectmen that are on the board now, because we had other names on there from previous. And at the next meeting, just an FYI, we updated, Bill got a sample from Primex on the harassment training, harassment policy. But that one's not on tonight, it'll be on the twenty-first agenda for the board to approve. And that one basically goes along with our personnel policy.
So does he need, this is just a notification, does he need a vote on it?
He needs a vote, and he needs the board to sign.
So is anybody, did everyone read the cyber preparedness policy, have any issues?
Motion to sign the cyber preparedness policy update by the safety committee.
Second.
Second by Charlie, any discussion? Edwin?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Kate?
I.
And I'm an I, okay.
So once you sign that sheet, Bill said he'll send it out to all the departments.
Representation letter, twenty-twenty financial audit. Just this one, office selectman. So I'm not gonna read this whole thing. So this is from our auditors, who did an audit, and they need a letter signed saying that the town-
Provided them all-
Provided all accurate information and all information that they needed.
Yep.
And just your signature. The chair signs it, and the town administrator signs it, so I just need a vote of the board for me to sign.
Motion to have the chairman sign the letter regarding the twenty-twenty financial audit.
Second.
Second by Charlie, any discussion? Kate?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Edwin?
Hi.
And I'm an I, okay.
I'm gonna read the manifest.
So we got the manifest.
Nope. Oh, yeah.
What?
Do you want me to read the manifest?
That's, unless you have something before that.
Nope.
Yes, we do.
What?
Other business?
Huh?
Are you on other business?
No, yeah, yeah, other business.
Sorry, other business, yes.
Other business.
So you've gotten a check for two hundred thousand, five hundred, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and twenty-nine cents as part of the Americas Release Plan Act. We need to have a public hearing to accept that because it's unanticipated funds.
But a motion to put that on the agenda on the twenty-first for a public hearing?
You can't do the twenty-first, you have to give a two-week notice.
Okay.
Maybe you have to put in the paper, so what I would recommend is that we schedule it for October fifth. That, I think it's October, let me make sure.
I think you said October fifth.
It'll be your first meeting, yeah, your first meeting in October would be October fifth, have it at seven o'clock. And then I can get it in the newspaper, and that'll cover us for the two weeks that we need.
Okay, okay. I get a motion?
Motion to have a public hearing to accept the ARPA funds on October fifth, twenty-twenty-one.
Second by Charlie, any discussion? Kate?
Hi.
Edwin?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
Hi, okay.
Great, I'll get that in the paper tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anything on, out on other business?
Nope.
No.
Okay. Sign vendor manifest dated September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
Second by Edwin, any discussion? Kate?
Hi.
Edwin?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
And I'm an I.
Sign the cable revolving fund manifested September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Second.
Second by Edwin, any discussion? Charlie?
Hi.
Edwin?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
I'm an I.
Sign police special detail revolving fund manifested September seventh, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of two thousand, twenty-one dollars.
Second.
Second by Edwin, any discussion? Kate?
Hi.
Edwin?
Hi.
Charlie?
Hi.
I'm an I.
Okay, announce the following manifests that haven't been signed. Vendor manifest dated August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents, of which one million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and five dollars goes towards a September sample and school board district payment. Number two, cable revolving manifest dated August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Emergency management revolving fund manifest dated August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of one thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars and four cents. Police special detail revolving fund manifest dated August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Inspection fees revolving fund vendor manifest dated August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and ten cents. Payroll manifests for a period August fifteenth through the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, with a pay date of September second, twenty-twenty-one, in the amount of seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-six cents.
Are there second on all those?
You don't need one, they're already signed.
They're already done.
Oh, okay.
Just announce it, that's all.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Minutes.
Okay, requisitions, we done them?
We did the requisitions.
Any announcements? Don't forget Old Home Day on September eighteenth.
Okay, if there's nothing else, want to close?
We're gonna accept the minutes.
No, we're gonna accept the minutes.
Accept the minutes.
Oh, oh, then we have the, are we gonna bring up the email thing, or are we gonna take care of that? Just have the officers, so sign him five or six.
Up to you guys, whatever you want to do.
Is that on the list?
No.
It's under other business.
It was not on the list.
So we need a motion for six email accounts for the fire department to be signed.
Wait, is this for the-
The fire department officers.
I thought we said that, when we talked to NMHA, that they could do like a, set up special Gmail addresses. Didn't we talk about that long ago, that that was okay?
We talked about it many times.
Not for the chief, of course, and et cetera, but due to the cost. Did I miss something?
I thought we did, too.
I don't know what she's talking about.
That we talked about the emails, that he was gonna use it?
I don't know what she's talking about.
Okay, we talked about how expensive they were.
Yeah, right there.
I recall going to NMHA.
Manager, wouldn't that be Nancy?
And that-
No, that's you.
Okay.
Can people hear me that?
Says chairperson.
Quasi judicial boards, right? Like planning and zoning, which are legal, that we would have to get it. But it didn't mean that everyone, every firefighter, every police officer needed a town email, because they don't really conduct a lot of-
You assign us two?
Business.
Correct.
So that those emails, the important emails, go to the chief, and that if people, that we shouldn't have to pay for more than that, we don't have it in the budget right now, and that just a regular-
Oh, see, I did sign, there's two of them.
Email address would be appropriate.
I agree.
For certain people, that would be my position for now.
We have two copies.
So the people that really needed are, well, one captain already has it. The deputy chief, one captain, and-
Like, four or five lieutenants.
Four lieutenants.
Already.
They do not have them.
I'm just saying, like, again, there's not, the equivalence of a quasi judicial boards, planning and zoning, which this all started with, it's not equivalent.
Huh?
You just wouldn't need it necessarily, and now with our budget, I'm very concerned.
Evan still sign it?
I know it.
I don't.
Where's the one I just gave you?
He didn't sign it yet.
I don't think we have the money for it right now.
No, we don't.
Evan, can you sign it?
So I would say, get a Gmail, like, they could, you know. Firefighter, well, the problem with-
No, he might get cash tomorrow.
Gmail dot com, or whatever they want to do in the meantime.
So the problem is-
Get the truck on the road.
Kate, if you do something like that, you do a public domain, the town does not have any recourse to act, to have access to those emails. Should they need it for-
I hear you, but in what instance are they doing really important emails?
Like, those important emails go with the chief? That, I, I could not tell you, I'm not in the fire department.
Of course, they, they would not be authorized to do, you know, important legal emails on town business. They go through the chief.
So, so my guess would be that, my thought process would be that we should give the officers town emails, so that we're there when they conduct town business. If there's anything that should not be out there, it'll be controllable by us.
You can take that dirty one, I'm gonna-
We're not giving all the firefighters email addresses, just the officers.
How many officers again?
I think it's six.
Yeah, the clean one.
Would that money come from?
No, right here.
That would come from, yeah, you're gonna have to take it out of the cable.
And give it to the cable revolving fund.
And how much each person, how much a year is this one?
You can throw that one away.
Yeah.
Does cable have the money for six?
Cable revolving, not cable.
Cable revolving fund.
Right, but how much does each of those cost?
Did you guys vote on that already?
No.
No.
Okay, because you gotta make sure you say-
It's five dollars an email.
I believe it was five dollars, right, an email?
That's what it was.
For annually?
No, a month, per user. So it's thirty dollars-
I'd really like to talk to NMHA again, because I remember reaching out them a long, a while ago on this.
I don't think we can do that, Kate.
I just-
Did you sign this one?
Do what, reach out to NMHA?
Edwin.
Why are you gonna reach out to them?
Legal, because I don't know if this is necessary, I'd like to know how many times officers are emailing private businesses. Edwin, what do you think, you're, you're, you're the one.
I think the officers, I think the officers need it, you're giving it to reserve officers in the police department, you're giving it to planning board, reserve members, you're giving it to zoning board, reserve members.
That's because they're legal.
The officers are supervisors, so at any time, they could be, speak of reputation.
Okay, so they're emailing a lot?
Say that again?
Are they emailing a lot, then?
Well, they can't, because any reputation stuff, they can't speak on their own. I, you know, I'll give you an example, when I was on the planning board, a subpoena came for my email, and it was my private email, and-
Oh, no, I know that, I'm just saying, planning, again, quasi judicial boards are a little different.
Yeah, so, so the lieutenants and the captains could be emailing in regards to a employee, and technically, they can't really do that on their own email.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
But they need to.
They would, yeah, if they want to write someone up, or... So motion to grant, it's actually seven. I just counted it. So it's John Kane, deputy fire chief.